Yeah, I didn't, I didn't think they were tied together before.
You don't have to be, it does need a supervisor.
I see, I see what you're saying.
But we don't have an additional one listed, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Correct.
Yeah, so that, that'd probably be okay to be separate, I mean, there's other, like the workforce and economic development, that's kind of why I wanted to be alternate on that because they were tied together. Generally, but they're, they're still separate entities that way.
Is this something that we can even change?
Yeah.
Probably, oh, it is, okay, okay.
Yep, yeah, that's why it's on the agenda here.
Well, it's got like Carter's on Care Connection.
Yo.
And you know, really, North Iowa Community Action works with Care Connections, they kind of go together.
Yo.
Which also, there's that, um, Tammy mentioned it for the agenda next week, Veterans Affairs, they were talking about.
Eddie Lordman?
Going to five.
Yeah, nice, heard, nice that they talked about.
Yep, I have that written down here on the workforce or that I'm on. It's, I don't know how much detail to get into here because it's still kind of early in the discussions and it will potentially go quick. But recently, hmm, I think it was Friday last week. Western region had a meeting, they have eighteen counties, eleven were there. And they had started discussions within the last couple of weeks to dissolve the twenty eighty and not participate in the workforce system through the federal state government because of multitude of reasons. And I was contacted by Craig Anderson from Plymouth County about it, we've had several conversations now and actually yesterday afternoon, we had a meeting about that and from our region and the other one that was potentially combining there. There's quite a bit of consideration for dissolving it for us as well, so that may, may change for me, but we don't, don't have an answer yet. So. Those were a couple of highlights, I guess. And I, I didn't bring it up the, when we approved the minutes, but the EMS board, we had talked about doing that together. Roger, so I don't, I don't know if you want to make changes to that now or not, but I, I definitely like to be involved there because that's, I think that'll be a big transition period this year.
We are in kind of the middle of getting our bylaws and everything else done.
Yeah.
And right now, I'm the chairman because Chair Dave is not in it anymore. He was the chairman.
Oh, okay, that.
So if you want to change, I don't care.
I, I would be very interested in that again because I was on it for quite a while and that's something I spent a lot of time on and have a passion for.
I mean, he went down to the Capitol to raise the, raise the issues on the EMS stuff, so I think he would, you know, he's got a lot more contacts than that compared to, so.
Yeah, I mean, Carter went with, but I guess he saw the conversations we had and I thought that was very productive.
Oh, I, I went for very well. What is the action we're taking here?
Um.
Or?
Well, the, the changes in general, so I guess whatever, whatever we collectively agree to, but.
I want to take on the, the EMA Commission as delegate.
The Emergency Management Commission?
Yes.
You could have been alternate on that, Roger? Just so we clarify the two of you that way.
Have you ever had an alternate before on it?
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, I think we have. I don't know about, I don't know about recent history, but.
That's how it should be laid out, though.
Yeah, it probably should be clarified that way. We have alternates on most of the other ones. I think it's good practice to have an alternate in general. What do you think, Carter?
That's up to you guys, I mean, if, if, uh, how, how you want to order that.
Yeah, I think you don't have to make a motion.
Yeah.
Because it isn't.
Yeah, yeah, we definitely need a motion to update them, um. I guess any EMS, I would, I would like to be on that one, I, I've got, had a lot of involvement in that over the years.
Do we need to make those as separate motions or?
If, if you're all okay with it, you can make it.
In one motion?
Yeah, I.
Oh, right there.
Right about in the middle, right under Emergency Management.
At this point, I'm just gonna stick with my committees and see how they go for the year.
Yeah. And the VA, I mean, will have to address that when they come on the agenda, so that will be separate.
The other thing that I wanted to address too is because the NICOG and the North Central Regional Response Commission, since those are tied together, um, Carter is the alternate for NICOG, but is, but I'm listed as the alternate for the Response Commission, which, as you were saying, that those meet back to back, so.
One of the two of us just alternate for both.
Yeah. Fine.
Who wants it?
I could, I could be the alternate for both of those since you're saying that they kind of tie in together as well with.
Well, actually, Transportation Policy Board meets right after the Emergency Management and.
Why don't, why don't I just take the alternate for that?
Yeah, probably be better for Carter if he's got transportation.
Yeah, I'm on the other tube, so.
Yep.
Carter's taking the alternate for Transportation Policy Board.
He's already the alternate for the transportation.
Right, and our central regional response.
Yeah, but Carter is alternate instead of Josh there, probably. And we'll see how the discussions go, workforce development may disappear, but I don't know that we need to change that at this point in time.
So tonight, we have an EMS meeting at five o'clock.
Yeah, I can be there, I was gonna be here in town anyway, so.
Okay, I was thinking that six o'clock, let me double check, no, that's you. Okay, so EMA is at six o'clock.
EMS is at that side before that? Okay.
EMS is before that?
Yes. Okay.
Nine one one boards, that's seven. I have those written together for some reason, so.
So we're be changing the NICOG Board Delegate or not?
No.
No, that's gonna. Be the, the North Central Regional Response Commission Delegate. Alternate, alternate, that's the only.
NICOG, North Central Regional Response and Transportation Policy Board would be the same delegate and alternate. It'd be Roger and Carter for both, all three of those.
Well, actually, your EMS Board. Or EMA Board. Emergency Management Commission, if Josh Slackner's gonna do that one, then he should do uh, the Policy Board, Transportation Policy Delegate.
That only met one time in the last four years. I'm pretty sure Donnie was on that before and.
Yeah, it meets quarterly, if you want to schedule, I'd tell it to you, but it meets quarterly.
So you're saying Emergency Management Commission Delegate should have Transportation Policy Board Delegate?
Right, because they meet one after the other in Mason City.
But the Emergency Management Commission does not.
That's what.
They're, they're, yes.
Together.
They're here in accounting versus going to Mason City, she's saying that the hazmat is over there, but it doesn't have to be the same for Supervisor Delegate.
Your hazmat is Emergency Management Commission Delegate.
I, I don't.
Because.
You, you can disagree with that, but that's the way it is, right?
Then we would have to separate and have someone on a hazmat.
Yeah.
And then someone on an Emergency Management, is that correct, or?
Yeah, we're not, you don't separate it to two.
I, I know, but I'm just saying, like, if.
If you're on the commission, you're on the commission, so. I don't care, but I can't see two people driving to Mason City, one right after the other, going to a meeting. That's my point, if you want to do that, fine, I don't care, but that's the way it is.
Do they have Zoom options and stuff for those meetings too?
For which one?
Hazmat.
The hazmat is Zoom.
Hazmat, you can Zoom that long, but you can't Zoom the other one.
So.
I know, they'll tell you that hazmat one of those usually.
Yeah.
So sometimes not even that.
So that's not a big deal.
So it's not, sometimes.
Well, Derek's back here, somebody make a motion on this and.
I'll make a motion to update the media assignments.
Uh, you better specify what was.
Yeah, do you want to make the changes?
So, um, Josh as Emergency Management Delegate, Roger as Emergency Management Alternate.
Yeah.
Kyle as EMS Delegate and Carter as North Central Regional Response Alternate. Correct?
I think so.
Yes, yep.
And, but I'm going to say that the Emergency or EMS is going to meet today and they're going to determine how the Advisory Board is supposed to be built.
Yeah, I'll be at the meeting, that's, that's fine.
So do I have a second to that motion? A second, son. Got it all down?
You, you can get the next one.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Now we're at.
Derek.
Derek.
Presenting? How much of this?
I just, well, I just said on the committee, so, um, I think the committee approved a few items for you guys, just wanted to say they have support of every member, it was unanimous votes on everything that came over. Um, I know there's been some discussion on this trailer, it sounds to me like there's legitimate need for that trailer. Um, and I don't know where that funds come from, the ARPA committee has the funds available for that. Uh, and that's not my, my department, uh, but it sounded to me like in that meeting, there was some valid points for that, so I just wanted to share that, that's all I have, uh, once you guys discuss that on your own, but, uh, want to make sure you guys are more aware of that, so.
So we have a resolution on the agenda to approve the use of ARPA funds. Resolution is one twenty-four twenty-three dash one. And it is for an EMA trailer and we talked about the ambulance, now we would dedicate two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the ambulance.
Correct?
Yes.
Section.
Purple section.
Yeah.
It's pretty hard to reach up to fifty-five thousand, it's like.
Yeah, which.
Do you think you're gonna need fifty-five thousand?
We just set up to that, I don't know, because I haven't really started to, like, I've looked at some things and there is things that are on sale that we could utilize. Um, I had one that was discounted twenty-twenty-two, but it sold already and that was that thirteen-eight thousand, so I wouldn't have had to use all of that. So to bring the rest of you up to speed, there's the huge red trailer, that's the big issue. Um.
Do you want to come up instead of sitting in the back row? We're not in church here.
So the EMS Association has the big red trailer, EMA insures the trailer. It is leaking, um, and it's gonna take some repair, quite a bit of repair, definitely get it all out, redo all that. Uh, it is extremely heavy. Uh, bike truck is the only vehicle that is able to pull it, therefore it limits the response, so if I aim out of county doing any trace needs or something or they need it, there's not a available vehicle unless the county has something close to that that they can go and pull that. So looking at this, um, working with Phil and looking at EMS, fire, all that stuff, the red trailer's purpose was for mass casualty, uh, medical triaging, fire rehab, instant command, so forth. So looking at that, working with, with Phil as well, you're looking at just putting the money into that red trailer, someone that using that, you know, that money to co-organize the new trailer. Uh, so the new trailer, it would be off for fire rehab again, mass casualty, medical triage, instant command, it would still be, um, used for the same purposes and it deploy a lot better because then we're looking at things that would be able to be pulled by other than just my other truck. So that's what we're working on. All the responding agencies need to step in for fire EMS law.
You guys are talking about selling that red trailer to help cover.
Yeah, I have to get it sold.
Okay, that's owned by EMS.
It is EMS Association, they've already okayed something.
So the funds would go back to them?
They would use those funds to put whatever needs to be put in the trailer.
Okay. How much, how much does it cost? I mean, did you, did you get an estimate as far as what it costs to repair trailers versus purchasing a new one or, or was that?
I didn't pursue it because one, I'm, then we're still around that issue of.
Wait.
Waiting to my truck, because I want to pull up, so.
What year is that? Trailers? The red trailer, oh, like, how old is it? How, how long has it been in the county?
Two thousand six.
We talked about that, but I, I, I think I heard a different number some other time, I don't know, I'd have to.
I have.
We'd have to, we'd have to go back to that.
It's older than ten.
Yes, it is older than ten.
It was bought before I came, so.
And it was here when I started public health in twenty, two thousand nine hundred. I think it was two, ten or two oh nine somewhere.
Does this factor in any, um, funds that are already available for the trailer repair or purchase?
So, no, the funds would come from some of that red trailer for inside.
Okay, I, I'd have to talk to probably Dave or Phil, but I believe when it was used for vaccination clinic or whatever, there's revenue.
Oh, there's probably a night, yes, there is a bunch there.
And that's, that's still available for this?
Yeah.
Well, this trailer will be owned by the county because it's being used with ARPA dollars, it can't be owned by Emergency Management. So this was a, this will be a county-owned trailer, not an EMA trailer.
Well, the other trailer was titled underneath the suit's going.
And also, everything is titled.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, it says on the agenda.
It doesn't matter.
Well, it's for EMA, but it's, it won't, it's just like the building, it's.
It's a county trailer for EMA use, but not exclusively for EMA use.
Just like the building, supervisors, yeah, because it's, it won't be under the budget of EMA.
And it sounds like EMS is supporting those too.
Yes, they've already had that discussion with the association, yeah.
So the ARPA funds, that is just strictly for the trailer, that's not equipping the trailer, anything like that, just for the purchase of the trailer itself.
I, I had some concerns in the ARPA meeting when this was discussed and I, I don't want to repeat all that, but I, I'd like to see more, well, first off, ARPA, I, I don't really like just using that as a blank checkbook because the money is available, that's not, not my intention for ARPA, um. I don't know.
What, what do we have in ARPA, or how does, if you explain briefly how that works as far as the money we receive from them?
Well, it started out, we received two point eight million dollars. It started out that they issued a list of what it could be used for and it was very specific and it can be only used to fight COVID pretty much, or to prevent or mitigate COVID.
Well, if you look at the form, it's got category qualifications, so there, in the initial stuff, there was categories that defined that.
And then it got opened up, um, to where it can be used for any governmental service. Okay, so, um, right now, we have spent most of our ARPA funds. Um, the ambulance was unemployed, so, uh, because Phil wanted to wait until after the election before we allocated those funds. So we'd already taken that two hundred and twenty-five, so, um, and Chris had originally asked for a drone, which he was able to get grants for that. So she had the money set aside for that, that was available, so she asked if she could present a new, um, item. But instead of using the money for the drone, and then, so we're at just about thirty thousand dollars that we have left. I hate to go much lower than that because some of our projects got coming in higher than what was presented originally because of cost of everything and some of the projects didn't include shipping and so, um, you know, that's, I, I don't want to.
Do you, do you remember the timeline on the top of your head? I believe we had to have things obligated by either twenty.
Twenty-four.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, twenty-four, so we technically have all of this year and all of next year to even decide what it gets spent on and then there's time.
Thousand dollars left.
Yes.
That's.
Out of that two point eight million.
So we're, we're at that.
What you're requesting, we, we don't have ARPA funds to cover.
No, we do, no, this, the only thing is making something, this is the six thousand, so, yeah.
So to say after the purchase of the trailer, then we would have thirty thousand dollars.
Yes, when the six thousand would be out of that.
And we have two years to spend it. Okay, or to decide what to even spend it.
Sure, sure.
So, yeah, that, that, that money is.
But at some point, it'd be nice to have it done.
Yeah, and, and that was.
True. I don't disagree with the need for it, it's, do we want to use all ARPA funds for it and is there any other avenues such as grants or, um, any other type of funding from other entities that will take use of this, um? There's another thing that kind of came up when we were down there, there, so, there was a county that purchased a trailer and they allowed for surrounding counties to rent that trailer for their events and stuff like that.
That's called throughout, it goes to other counties, it was used over for, say, for their big musical festival all the time for their incident coming in, it has gone to, uh, I know it's gone down to Wright County, I think it's gone, it's been used for multiple things.
Do we get, do we get revenue from them using it?
Emergency Management, but creating each other's equipment if we need, now the disaster, I can charge for that.
Doesn't Emmett County have a new?
They have a new trailer too, and that's exactly what we're trying to build off of, it's like what they have.
But we would have a neighbor that's immediately beside us that would have that as well.
So I just get to bring up like the duration, you know, that's very common and we've had one up at Blake's and we've had, you know, you've seen them in central Iowa. They use every county's pretty much instant command trailer, so, because it hit everyone, so you can't just rely on, I have that other county's trailer if I need it.
No.
It's an effect, that affects all of us, and then going back to the fire rehab part of it, right now, they're rehabbing out of the ambulance, which is not kosher because then they have to go back and sanitize that, and what chemicals are they bringing into that to the ambulance and they have to go back and sanitize it, so. Again, going back to multiple things, you know, could be vaccination companies in the county, again, we did use the red trailer for that, we took that up to do vaccinations and the communities for COVID, you know, that's an option again for public health, we, the trailer be used for, you know, fire rehab again, disaster. You know, we don't know, we're, we have, our climate is so different lately and we were having tornadoes and thunder, you know, and and we have durations and hoopoes that we don't normally see, so.
I did ask during our committee of Emergency Management could they have, but it sounds like the ARPA funds, we can't, that, that would be all, all around the mall. But I, I did bring that up initially, if that, if you think it's split, but.
And that's the same with the grants with the ARPS as well.
Yeah. Yeah.
Which is unfortunate, it's, I think that'll be good.
Yes.
Did you, did you have your, you have a meeting today about, or with, with all of the mayors?
I do have to be.
Today, because I, some of mayors and, you know, just, uh, citizens have reached out to me, being concerned about the trailers, that's not, not saying you're wrong for asking, I'm just, that's why I'm asking these questions.
And that's why I want to be here, because I've heard complaints as well about it, so, um, I just wanted to let you guys know that it sounds like there's a balance need. And a split would be great, but it doesn't sound like that is a possibility, so.
Is, I, is this, I guess just it boils down to is the fifty-five thousand dollars, is that what we want to use the ARPA funds for? Is that the best use of that money? Or, or not?
That's great.
I, I don't think so, I'm, I'm good with the ambulance and the suction units, but I would, I would make a motion to remove the trailer from the resolution and approve the other two.
Put it down?
Yeah.
Anybody you're gonna second that? Do I have a second to his motion?
So you're approving resolution one twenty-four twenty-three oh one with the removal of the trailer.
Correct.
There ain't no second, it fails. I would make a motion to approve resolution one twenty-four twenty-three oh one.
Just a second. Okay, now you can think your.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve resolution one twenty-four twenty-three oh one. As it stands. And ask for a second.
It's tough one, I know, it's, uh.
When it, when it comes to the trailer, I just, I don't think this is the place for it.
I'd like to know what, what the better option is, if we're not using the money for that, what are we looking to use the money for? Because if it is the best option, well, then let's spend it, but if it's not, if there's something better to spend it on, then what is that? And that, that's, that's my.
We don't have any other, we don't have any other.
I'm kind of.
It's being presented forever right now.
And, and what's to say these other?
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Your pleasure.
I'm going to ask again for a second, and if I don't get it, the motion will fail. Hearing on the motion failed for lack of a second, uh, let the record show that no action was taken on resolution one twenty-four twenty-three oh one.
So we're not approving the ambulance purchase or the?
Well, that's. That's all part of that motion.
It is, yes.
You want to put it off for a week and come to the Mercy Mashup meeting?
That's what I, I think, that's what I was gonna ask, I'd like to, I'd like to see how the meeting goes. Can we make a decision on a next week?
Because I'm truly think.
So we can get some more, yeah.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, yeah, but I know I've heard a lot of grumbling both directions.
Even in front of mayors. Split the resolution, decide on.
We can do it however.
Decide on the ambulance and the suction, because those are obvious, yes, and, and, that's, that is, you didn't, okay, I didn't understand it, so can we go back to that first motion?
Well, you can make another.
I, 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 I will make it again to do the ambulance and the suction.
And tables trailer next to life. Yeah, I didn't realize we could split the resolution like that, so that's why I was like, uh.
So it's not, it's not directly tabling it, we still have the option to discuss that again, but it's, the motion is not directly tabling, it's removing from this one.
Stecker's making a motion to approve the resolution without the, um, trailer.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Doing, we have a second to Mr. Stecker's motion, I'll second, second by what, sir? Any more discussion?
You didn't go fast enough.
There are no discussion, you roll call vote?
Yeah.
Yes.
Wacker.
Yes.
Stecker.
Yes.
Jerk.
Yes.
But I would.
I just wanted to. Yeah, this isn't a no, yeah, just, just so you know, this isn't a no on the trailer, we want more information.
It's not my trailer, I just, you know, committee and, um.
Yeah, yeah, so, I'm, well, I'm saying that because people will ask why it got turned down, this isn't indefinite, no, this is a, we want more information before we can.
I'm with you a hundred percent.
Yeah.
Did you guys change the nine one one committee membership?
No, nine one one, no.
Okay, so. Okay, so Roger, you're still on first night, seven?
Oh, yeah. You want to change it? Somebody else want it?
Just I mean.
How well does that tie in? How well does that tie into the? You're stuck on.
Yes, I do. If you want to change.
You want to change it? You want to be the nine-one-one delegate? You gotta go to meetings tonight, Tim.
Yeah.
They they'd be that.
I mean, they.
That that would be more side by side than the one in Mid City.
Yeah. Sorry, Tammy.
That's okay.
So.
You're gonna have carpal.
Do you want in the minutes now?
Okay, so so you're taking nine-one-one, Jeff?
Yes, I will.
Somebody has to make that motion.
I'll make the motion to appoint.
Drumroll please.
Hey, second.
I'll second.
I was waiting second.
Any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? I'll say I'm opposed.
You're opposed?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
You don't want to relax tonight?
No. Well, I don't need to go to any of them tonight.
Not no, no, you don't.
Is there anything else you want to change?
And Roger, you're not gonna do anything now. There have to be any rules.
He already had a lot of meetings.
Yeah, he's got the most, I'm pretty sure.
Does anybody want to do kept?
Nope. Now Tammy's out of room for notes.
Yeah, now there is.
The auditor says no, we're moving on.
I think so. But you're still you're still on for the Nyakog stuff, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that didn't change.
No.
So we didn't take everything from you.
I he still probably got more out of it and out of anyone for committee assignments, so. He's not gonna be completely bored.
Oh, yeah. I don't have any tonight. No, that's good.
We just opened your night up for you.
Anything else to come before the good of Cassius County?
Miss yet, let me look.
Actually, we've, yeah, it's auditor and board discussion is all that I do not have crossed off.
Oh, we got, yeah, we got boards in session.
Tammy was in the Tammy was in the middle of her stuff.
Um so and I will quick fix this article one. So you guys can all sign it before you leave. Um, okay, so to to touch base back on uh budget workshops. Um a little bit um. So i- it's gonna be a lot in a short amount of time to get everything done because we're. You guys are pretty much gonna have to meet with our department heads over again to talk about wages and stuff. Um but I'm guessing just because it's wages, they might not take as long, so I would, but they might take longer because it's wages. So do you want, when I set them up? I'm not gonna put times on them on the agenda because we have to do it. This is start time, but I'll list what departments we're talking about each time.
But.
And do you want me to set them up in fifteen minute increments or half hour?
I think can we, I would say just call them. Like, can we tell them to kind of be ready and then we call?
No, I know, but when I set it up on the schedule, do you want, because I'll tell them what time and how long. So how I I won't have it on the agenda, but they'll have a schedule because what I did last time is I just told them to go in. Go in and.
We cannot start until their time, correct?
If it's on the agenda, but I'm not gonna put it.
Oh, okay.
So that's why, but what I did last time was I set up a worksheet. They could just go on and put what. So I need to know what kind of slots to put in to put fifteen minutes.
If it's just wages, I mean, it shouldn't take a half hour for a department.
It it could.
Well, because we're adding the wages to each department, so we're kind of having to review the department as well.
Well, I guess put them a half hour. If we're running early, we're running early.
I I would say.
Run a half hour early, we'll just move one up and.
It's like what we did last time. We called Aaron over, so.
Yep.
Yeah, I I would I would just have them ready and be available by phone so that we don't have people sitting in here for a half an hour either.
Okay.
That's not productive for anyone.
Probably when you get to Doug, you're gonna have to have a little work to send me.
Well, we haven't done any of his yet, and he does. He has gotten me his now, so I have all the papers.
Can you have that like at the beginning of the list or the first days? Cause if that'll take a lot.
Well, I you leave it up to them. What works for them and I they go in and put in the times. I don't decide that. So that because otherwise it's too much of Tammy, that doesn't work for me. This doesn't work for me. And so it's easier for them. To set, put in there. Um so um. Um.
To all that sort.
Yes, I would be ready to please. Um. So if we. Tomorrow, so who all meets tomorrow for the union? Just you? I just, I don't know. I this is my first.
This is this is the whole board, but then.
Yeah.
When you have discussions with them, it was usually chair and vice chair.
Just Bligherman's or past, but.
Okay, to be there.
Yeah.
Am I supposed to be there? Okay.
You gotta take notes.
Okay, okay, just because this is my first negotiation.
Usually Herman goes in and negotiates and then he comes back and asks the board if it's accepted.
Okay, so we worked that here. And then from what Renee told me. In the email that she sent me, I asked her specifically if I needed to put on the agenda the meeting with Will and she said no. So uh because it wasn't, they weren't gonna be presenting any information. It was just gonna be maybe touching basements. So that's why that is not on the agenda. So I'm getting that from directly from her.
Okay.
She told me exactly how to word it on the agenda. So.
Do they, so they don't have a formal presentation?
No, the the negotiator, the bargaining unit, no.
Wait.
Not that I'm, no, not that Renee knows of, and not that I know.
Do we have any idea if they will soon?
Well, they're gonna have to.
He's got an idea. He's gonna present something, I'm sure.
Well, then why don't they make it a formal thing and we discuss it?
There's not enough time now to put that on the agenda. Gotta be on the agenda twenty-four hours.
Yeah, I mean, it's eleven-thirty now.
Okay. I have nothing else to do.
I mean, it's one line. It's not that big a deal. I could type that up in five minutes.
I mean, I mean, that's something we'd have to ask Renee and Will, I guess. We have to go with them and see if it's something. I mean, I we could call her and see if she's heard anything.
I just don't want him to come on Wednesday and say this is our thoughts or whatever and expect us to go back and forth and.
Why don't?
Be like, oh, let's schedule something for tomorrow. I.
Is it okay if I call him and I come here and we can find out what he's expecting to do? Okay.
Yeah, do that.
Yeah, I my whole point is I just don't wanna do some Thursday or Friday. We could have done it tomorrow.
Hey, do you have a minute? You can come in the boardroom. Okay, I'll see you shortly. Thank you. Bye. But we'll just ask him. We get to contact Renee.
At least here we're still in session, so.
And then.
Will it take you an hour and a half to type?
It's typing, it's the posting and the sending to the paper and all that kind of stuff.
Right.
It's all the stuff that goes with it that you don't think about.
I I know. I was just giving you a time.
Yes, no, I I can do it as long as I know, but I still think we need to talk to Renee and make sure she's ready to do it too. So once we talk to Will, we can talk to Renee.
Well, he's coming.
And then I let me think what else um. So back to when we do it. If we've are able to figure stuff out tomorrow, does it usually take more than a day? How long is usually?
I have a couple times.
Depends upon how realistic they are. It might take two days.
Yeah.
And they can set the second day up for like this weekend or would it be next week?
Well.
I mean, you still have the same, but potentially early next week.
Okay, so if I set stuff up for Tuesday afternoon. I don't want her to know that till Friday. So if I set it up for Tuesday afternoon, that would be okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, well. So um just a quick question. Um I did Renee talk to you about meeting tomorrow for a bargaining unit?
Hmm.
Do you have a presentation you're going to be presenting at that time or is it just informal talking? Or what what is your plan for tomorrow?
I assumed it was just like it was three years ago when we did it, where we sit down with the chair and Renee and we discuss and the chair goes back to the board.
So that would be.
So you you are.
That's formal.
You are anticipating of.
Well, that's what I assume, but.
I don't think.
You're gonna have to have a written proposal for.
You have to have an initial proposal.
Yeah.
We have to have a starting point, so to speak. Yeah.
This conversation like her.
Do you know her number or?
Oh, uh. Question, why is it changed from the last time we did this?
That would be the same.
Okay, so Renee.
No. Kyle, I don't mean to be disrespectful, but I was here and you weren't and we did not have written.
Three years ago, I was here.
But when we sat down, we did not give a written proposal. We came in disgusted. Jack went back and talked to you guys. We went to the ladies and talked and then we came back together and met in the middle.
Let's call Renee.
We've always had a written one from the secondary robe one. My ears would have been any different.
They have a union. This isn't a union. This is only a.
Well, there there was a union the last time, though.
And we never gave Artie any information of, well, this is what we're asking or not.
Is try her work number or?
You want her cell phone?
I have.
I try her work first with you in words. Thank you. I just want to show that we're all getting what we were expecting.
Well, that's I assumed we were negotiating.
That's not what Renee sent me in the email, so.
We're sorry, your call cannot be completed as dialed.
I didn't hit one first. I don't.
Oh, you gotta hit.
Take it there. Try again.
Renee said she hasn't received anything regarding their initial calls. So that's why she didn't think.
We get done with the road workers group decisions. Then we need it.
Will she do see what she says?
Yeah.
Renee Van Valken, I'm sorry, I'm not available.
Try again.
Does that hurt?
No, this will be.
This is Renee. I'm sorry I'm not available to take.
Ah, yeah.
Which one?
Do I try calling her from myself so she'd have my number in there? She might.
Yeah, go ahead.
Two, four, six, seven. Hmm, that's from Sal.
Great voice.
Yeah. We can check on you in a few minutes after you. That's I think all I have. If you guys want to supervise yourself, I would make.
Yeah.
Stay here, put you.
Mr. Carter, do you have anything you did next week?
I'm gonna call Ron and do a call because this.
I just attended ISAC um and great opportunity to network with other people around the state and get some. Starter information and and I I enjoyed being down there. So I'm like, like we mentioned earlier, we have to go. Speak with the our legislators and discuss some EMS stuff. So uh I've great, great opportunity. That's that's all I have. I miss the wellness committee while I was down there too.
Yeah.
Yes, I think uh down at ISAC and and got to network, meet with the. Other board supervisors, guys that have been there for a while, other new guys. Discuss things that they're running into and things like that and just kind of network and share information and. And then we, the second day, we got to um have presentations from. The other departments, you know, trader's office, obiter's office and and see how everything all kind of tied in together. And it was nice to. Get that kind of overview to start with, so. So this is a good advice. It is.
Yeah.
Took lots of notes.
Ron?
Obviously, same as them, um but the ISAC meetings. Have the capital we've already discussed. Committee assignment or committee reports talked about workforce before. I have C I J D C on Friday. So that'll be coming up and with the Zoom in the afternoon, now that I think about that, we'll have to see what time I get back. Cause I might just have to watch that as I drive back or something, listen to it. Um. Otherwise, I think pretty much everything else we've kind of hashed out as the meeting's gone here and discussed, so. Think that pretty well. Wraps up mine.
Does everybody have a Zoom contacts for the meeting on Friday?
I don't know. I have a link in my email.
Meeting on Friday?
But you, I don't think you have to be there, Roger. I think that Renee's doing.
I know, but are you are you going to zoom into it? Anybody's that's what he's talking about.
What what meeting is on?
This is in regards to.
For us, yeah, yeah, we were.
Links, so.
It should have been on the paperwork that you got.
The item I have on my calendar, I don't have a link on there, but I know I would have it in my on my electronic.
Okay.
Documents for the case, so I'll I can find that and I can send it to you if you don't have it.
So you are planning on going on?
I will probably sign in for it if nothing else, just to listen and watch. But yeah, I I will plan on being there. I can't guarantee if the other meeting runs long or something, but I will. Intend to be.
Tell the other ones. Anybody that asks, they'll have to zoom in.
No, 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 the attorney's supposed to be covering it, so they don't have to shift what they want.
It's optional. Yeah, it's.
Al Spector wanted to know. How to zoom in and so down the grigger.
It's on that, I think.
Is it on that?
Yeah, it should.
Okay.
It's all all in the court case.
They probably got phone numbers to call, so.
Well, it's yeah, it's 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 all in the judge's order. There's a Zoom link in there.
Anything else?
Yeah, I forgot to mention I have three meetings tonight. Or. Cause I got economic development at four o'clock. Five is the EMS.
Yep.
Six is the emergency management.
Right, and seven.
And then seven's E nine-one-one.
Yep.
Lucky you.
You're not on EMS.
I am now. We made that change.
No, no, you're. Wrong initial.
Yeah.
No, wait a second. He said.
No, I'm on the E nine, E E nine-one-one.
You're on E nine-one-one.
As the.
That, yeah.
That was the change we just. You might as well just sit there.
Just have all E's, I mean. Yeah, uh let's call her. Sell or?
That was busy. She was obviously probably not in.
She doesn't call me.
Police is ringing.
Yeah, that's a step in the right direction. Hey Renee, this is Kyle. We got you on the conference line here in the boardroom. Um. Tammy is here. All board members except Jack and Ron and Willie are in the boardroom here as well.
Hi Renee. This is.
Hello.
So um after we emailed last week, um I didn't put anything separate on the um agenda for. The bargaining unit because you thought you said it was gonna be informal. Well, Will was planning on. Um actually it being a normal negotiation. So Will and Ron are here. Um is that something that you will be ready for? Can we still add that to the agenda for tomorrow? We wanted to get your thoughts.
Yeah, we can be ready. Um Will, did did it? Do you guys have a like an initial proposal prepared or? Were you planning on just having a discussion or what?
I was thinking we were gonna do it just like we did three years ago where we come in and we sit and talk and. You go back to the board and we go back to the ladies and meet the meeting.
Yeah, so we can, what was sort of hard to predict is exactly what time. You know, because I think we're gonna meet with the road and then I don't know, you know, you just never know how long that's gonna take. But yeah, we can certainly do that. It's just that we I'm not, I suppose we can put a time down. We can kind of guess at a time and then um. You know, we may have to modify that, but I I was planning on doing. I, I was planning on doing that, I mean, I was planning on meeting with the, with courthouse unit tomorrow.
Yeah, we're not.
I just didn't, I just didn't know if we were gonna follow all of the normal procedures regarding, you know, the exchange of initial proposals, we don't have to do that, um, so that's, that's why I said, that's why I used the word more informal, might have thrown people off, but I was planning on, yes, meeting with that unit tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, so what do you want, so I'm gonna have to add to the agenda then and get it out before this.
So, if, if what we're doing is bargaining, we don't need to do anything on the agenda, cause it's the only thing that has to be on the, at an agenda is if there's an official exchange of initial proposals. So, for example, the union has a sheet of paper that says, you know, wage increase of so-and-so, and we have one back. In this case, I don't know that that's really required, so negotiations are exempt from chapter twelve.
So, if we don't make a decision, it doesn't need to be an agenda item.
Well, it's not a board of supervisor meeting.
Yep.
And I, and I know that's kinda confusing, but, so there really is no decisions to make, we reach a, you know, we meet with the, the two bargaining teams, we reach a tentative agreement, um, you know, they take it back to ratify the board votes, and then it's public. So the meeting, the negotiations are just simply not, there's no requirement, there's no open meeting requirement, there's no agenda, there's no.
So the, so the only reason we have the one on for tomorrow with the roads is because of the formal initial proposal, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I think that answers our question, so.
That, that, then we're going to.
I guess.
All right.
Well.
So we're starting with the road at one, right?
Correct.
Yep.
So I'm gonna estimate, oh, I don't know, I'm gonna estimate three o'clock, um, but I'm assuming Will, you'll start to be out, you know, around, and we can let you know, or text you or something when we're done, in case we get done early.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, all right, thank you.
That works, we'll see you tomorrow, thanks.
That's what we did before.
So you guys must have never submitted a formal.
Like I said, I was just going off what we did last time, because we never gave Artie any, any information saying, hey, this is what we want, can we go for this, we just sat it down at the table.
Okay, that's that, so we got, got that crisis averted.
We just wanted to make sure we weren't doing something that we, meeting that we go and was having.
Lots of T's and not the I's.
We didn't wanna not have to say we can't do this because we do.
Yeah, we still have twenty-four hours, even though it's close.
I was pretty sure that's how they did, I mean, last, they did that way.
Yeah, well.
Very good.
Yeah, right.
We had too many negotiations last, last time, we had too many, we had the sheriff and road workers and you guys.
Tammy, back to the committee assignments real quick, so we just did for me to be the delegate on E nine-one-one, is that what it was?
Yes.
Okay, so who's the alternate then? Because I was the alternate and Roger was the delegate, I just wanna make sure we've got that sorted out.
I can't find my paper.
Can you read through ten papers and notes?
What I did was by the plane, sorry. Here's. So E nine-one-one. You're right, so we're gonna have to make, uh, somebody's gonna have to make a motion to.
Let's put Carter as alternate.
Alternate on nine-one-one?
Yeah.
Are you making that?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, both, take care.
Sorry, didn't mean to beat that dead horse, but it was, it was just, I just thought about it, and I was like, well, I was the alternate, so we need to have a new alternate.
Motion to adjourn.
Hold on, let me find that.
We haven't got to that page yet.
Yeah, okay.
We've only gotten to that page five times and then gone back.
Oh, wait, that motion.
Carter.
Carter.
Okay, and who seconded?
I did.
All those in favor of your journey?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
I'm hungry.
Alone, seven.
Right before lunch, perfect, okay, guys, thank you for that.
Make it with much room to spare, but you won't.
Yes, thank you. I think Roger forgot about that.